Good morning, it's nine o'clock. It's Tuesday morning, December 14th, workshop.
Madam Chair, I move that we amend to our agenda by taking the executive session, which was first on the agenda, and move it to the last on the agenda.
Is your reason?
I was told to.
Also, you can add to that to discuss personnel and possible litigation.
To discuss personnel and possible potential litigation.
Okay.
You mean our-
Second that motion.
That personnel person may sue us?
Not that personnel.
I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. All in favor, let me know by your hand. Okay, sixty-one. Discuss information of housing council by Gitchain, director of planning development, Frederick Gardner will address.
Sorry, Frederick.
Was that you?
I just got my Christmas present. I had to go do work on my bill with $252.99.
Could've bought a new computer.
Not for that, no.
They get some surplus ones.
Don't need to sit with Gitchain.
Where's the-
Frederick's waving.
Frederick.
Good morning.
Nothing like preparation.
Which one's reasonable?
Nothing like preparation.
Beyonce outfit looks fairly-
We're so harsh, I don't want you to-
Not the whole of them though.
The hard drive is what now we got filled with the car.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Once again, apologize for the technical difficulty. Today, I want to kind of briefly go over some of the results from our Georgia Initiative for Community Housing. As you know, we graduated this past September after two years of working with the University of Georgia, Finding Institute, DCA, and a number of the communities around the state of Georgia as it relates to trying to come up with means of addressing some of our housing and neighborhood issues. So, we've kind of put together our team, which includes our current mayor, Jacinta Ward, who's here, Patricia Oldhutte, who's yours, a Realtor, Nikki, of course, National Bank, involved from Housing Authority, all members of that team and have worked for the last two years. It's a little bigger than that, a little larger than that, but they've all worked for the last two years, three years, excuse me, on this whole project. And Shannon Buckner was the one who actually wrote the grant for us to be a part of this initiative. One of the things I want to work with you guys on is a little quick exercise. And I want you, as I pull these down, I want you all to look at them and tell me if you think these things are viable today as it relates to housing in the city of Griffin. And if it is, I would love for you to just raise your hand briefly. If you think that there are no single coordinating entity to address housing issues in the city of Griffin, raise your hands. If you think that statement is correct.
Well, for us, what do you mean by housing?
Housing as it relates to housing affordability, safe housing, affordable housing, housing standards, housing education, housing awareness, as it relates to cost burden, all of the different issues centered around housing.
No, I didn't think there was anything here.
Okay.
I mean, to cover all of that spectrum.
Do you think that there's a lack of coordination between housing providers?
Do y'all have a rental landlord association?
Okay.
We would have half our problems if we did.
Oh, okay.
Because they wouldn't be renting.
Do you think there's a need for centralized housing information dissemination to providers and the citizens?
Probably.
I agree with that.
Auctions should be taken to identify purchased sites for construction of affordable housing within the city on infill lots or suitable lots for development of small subdivision. Do you think that's been happening?
I don't know.
A comprehensive rehab program that should be designed and implemented to offer homeowners and invest in the needed resources. The increased number of units being demolished is alarming and should be addressed. Do you think that those are issues? Perception of a lack of concern regarding housing issues by policymakers. There's a need to develop a comprehensive housing strategy to determine how the identified needs will be met by home and establish priorities for the utilization resource in meeting these needs. Okay. If you guys answered yes to some or all of those, I want you all to understand that these recommendations were part of a housing study that was done over fifteen years ago. Very long time ago, Commissioner Bach in 1989 sought to have a housing strategy done, and it was done for 1990, looking at housing-related issues from 1991 to 1996. The CHAS document, as we call it, the Comprehensive Housing Affordability Strategy is now what we call in the state and nationwide, the Consolidated Housing Plan, which is a HUD document. As you recognize, this document is very old, but yet all of the recommendations that I just showed you are still viable today, which means we have not addressed a lot of the housing issues that was identified so very long ago. So, one of the things our GIC committee wants to look at is to use this as, I guess, a baseline to start moving forward with addressing some of the housing needs, realizing that some of the recommendations in this document, we could take forward as we look to address housing issues and housing needs in the city of Griffin. A lot of the data, obviously, are old because it was 1990 census data that they were using. But if you read through this document, they will tell you how a lot of the issues they will have in this probably issues we're going to have as we look forward to addressing some of the housing needs in the city of Griffin. But, you know, today, we want to kind of just discuss Griffin's housing priorities, as we know from our GIC training, discuss Griffin's housing needs, the collaborative efforts in housing and the redevelopment, discuss redevelopment priorities, and then receive some recommendations on the formation of a housing council. And that housing council is going to look at how do we oversee the development of a consolidated housing plan, and I'll go into more detail, coordinate all of Griffin housing activities, advocate for housing, resources, and collaboration, and coordinate housing education, which we think is really important in the city of Griffin. When I first got here, I remember telling Kenny, Kenny Smith, that one of our biggest challenges here is the lack of entities to assist the city. As I tell him, you know, no mine is an island, and especially as it relates to this huge problem that we have here, that the city can't accomplish it by itself. There are accesses and means that we don't have, that can assist us, the city, with improving housing and neighborhood, but we can't do it on our own. And over the last six years, we've seen somewhat of a growth in entities that are now focusing on housing. Some have been around, they've been working on their own, working in the shadows, working in the open, but there's never been a collaborative efforts between all of these different entities that you see up here to truly come together and provide you guys, the policymakers, at the city, school board, the county led to the officials on, what we need to do is as an overall community to move housing as a priority in the community. The city of Griffin is part of this. Griffin Housing Authority is part of it, Affordable Housing Enterprises is part of it, Habitat for Humanity, Squarefoot Ministries, private for-profit developers, Kingdom Builders has been in the community a few times, our financial institutions, and our real estate agencies are all part of this housing team that we have identified. And what do these entities bring to the table? As we look at all of these entities, they all bring some unique functions that we could bring to bear on addressing our housing needs. The Housing Authority with property management, housing finance, they can also be a developer as well as housing counselor. There are powers that we have, that the Housing Authority doesn't have. We've got code enforcement, billing, inspection, and safety, access to grants, incentive programs that we could put in place to affect some level of change in our housing, affordable housing enterprises. As a community housing development organization, they bring some skills too, new construction, housing rehab, housing counseling. Our nonprofit, they can also do construction, housing rehab, housing finance, and our for-profit entities can provide housing construction, housing finance, housing sales, rental, and financial training. These are all entities, key players in this whole collaborative effort that we want to bring together on the one strategic plan. And as we call housing supportive services, you know, these are some of the things that our Housing Authority and our Habitat are capable of doing for us. And I've kind of gone over those as part of redevelopment. The Housing Authority still has access to eminent domain. They can assist us in those areas as we address our neighborhood redevelopment initiatives. They can also do bond financing. They can be their own developer under different umbrellas. Habitat, as you know, have been working in the community, but really and truly outside of coming into our office and getting a permit, there's really not been a collaborative effort to work with Habitat. City of Griffin, these are some of the things that we've done on our own in pursuing housing. Code enforcement, comprehensive planning and strategic planning as it relates to urban redevelopment planning, our One Town, One Goal program, some of the initiatives with our free dumping and demo, our tax allocation, our enterprise zones, and of course, we've had access to water and sewer grants through CDBG, out of tune of 1.5 million, and first-time home buyer program, money through CHIPS. Our for-profit, we went through this, some loans, access to loans, but not only that's loans from the private side and the financial side. The Federal Home Loan Bank worked through our local banks to provide resources, funds to our community. We have not worked with them on any federal home loan initiatives that they may have been working on or collaborated to go after federal home loan funds to act as leverage funds or to act in conjunction with the funds or resources that we already have in place. Affordable Housing Enterprises, a community housing development organization. I worked with two of them in the state of Illinois. One did one award for being a first choo-too in the state to provide new construction, affordable housing in the community of city of Decatur. And the other one did rehab of existing house for sale to low to mortared income. But a choo-too has a lot of powers that they can use, and they can leverage, those entities can leverage with the city to provide housing rehab opportunities in the communities, as well as provide housing counseling and financial literacy, which is also a key component. As we talk about neighborhood decline, and I think we've all kind of looked at this and bonded the statistics back and forth, you know, where are we as it relates to our housing tenure? National, I would say, should consist about forty or more percent of occupied homes. You start to see, when you see that number of rental going in the community, you start to see neighborhood decline. Housing decay, disinvestment from homeowners or owners, as well as disinvestment from the city. You start to see that, and you look at most major urbanized areas, you understand why, when you drive through some of these neighborhoods, the investment, the disinvestment is also part of what the cities have been, those cities have been involved in, not just from the private sector, but the public sector. So, how do we start to go back in these areas and reengage these communities as we realize, and I'll talk more about it, what the overall impact of these communities are on the city as a whole in Spaulding County? This has been a priority for us since we've been here, I think, the last six years working with Kenny Smith and our other team, is the elimination of substandard housing. We try to go after the issue of homeownership, creating multicultural socio-economic diverse communities, neighborhoods, because you know that's important, that's key. We can't draw a red line around communities and say we're going to put poverty here. We can put low-income housing here. That's a strategy that the United States Housing and Urban Development says does not work. And so, we have to look at how do we disperse and provide multiple access as you see these creative programs with mixed income and mixed use developments are now key and important. We no longer believe in stratified concentration of affordable housing, inviting economic indewelment into neighborhoods, because these communities also provide opportunities for jobs for the people that live there, but also provide access for shopping. As you know, most of your chain grocery stores are not close by to your low-income neighborhoods, especially in the city of Griffin, and where do you have your mom and pop's small stores? But they don't always provide the necessary nourishment for the young folks in those communities, as well as for the elderly. And getting the neighbors involved in the process, that's been key, and that's one of the things I know from staff standpoint we've been lacking, is getting the involvement of the folks that live in the community to be part of the community. One of the things I read in this document was how the disinvestment starts with the fact that we can't get folks to live in these communities. That actually becomes part of why the neighborhoods are declining. If you think, if you look on page three where it talks about the summary, it says, "Safety of residents in inner-city neighborhoods has been addressed in every component of the study. Some neighborhoods have been discarded as unacceptable due to high incidence of drug trafficking and related crime, the loss of the fundamental rights to enjoy a safe environment, and private properties are driving responsible citizens out of these neighborhoods." How do we get these responsible folks back in the community to help us move these communities forward? That's going to be a key component. Obviously, offering residential leadership programs is part of that process, is key. Neighborhood watch, curbside markets, after-school programs for a lot of the kids, because we recognize some of the things we've been hearing is why, how do we get these kids off? We were just at a neighborhood town hall meeting at Rising Star Baptist Church last week, and one of the residents said, "How do we get these young folks off the corners?" That's part of it. If we could get them educated, get their diplomas, they could be at least competitive in the job market when we do provide job opportunities, that they won't be the last one or the least hired, but they'll be the most marketable ones regardless of the current circumstances. Community associations, working with our churches. As we recognize, we just had a town hall meeting in a church in the middle of the neighborhood. How do we leverage those resources to help us? They have access that we don't have access to, bring them out. And providing, one of the key components, money management services to allow these residents. How do you better manage your money to provide for your long-term stability of yourself and your family? That's been key. One of the first things I think the GIC committee wants to accomplish in our first year, if we're able to do so, is one, the formation of a housing council. And that housing council is just going to be an advocate for affordable housing to this board in its current state, to the board, hopefully, the Board of Education, and to Spaulding County. The development of a comprehensive housing plan, we need to have that plan in place. That is going to help us put all of these entities together on one page with one vision, with one mission, and so when we all applying or looking to access federal grants or nonprofit grants, we've got a document that says, "This is where we're going, this is our roadmap, and this is why we're coming to you for resources." And look who else we have at the table. We're not just coming by ourselves, Griffin Housing Authority, but the Housing Authority is coming with the city of Griffin and using the city of Griffin resources and vice versa. So, that's part of the key component of why we need to go for this plan. Promote housing awareness. I think one of the key things that we have to get out here to people are some of the resources that we have in place. I typically hear when we talk about code enforcement, about folks living under the bridge, homelessness, the number one person that'll end up in homelessness are children. That's a nationwide statistic. How do we look at this? Have we ever looked at addressing it? Have we ever done a point-in-time study to see who the homeless are? Where are they? Where are they going for resources? I don't think we've ever done that. But to look at those and promote housing awareness, we have money for first-time home buyer program if you have a stable job, even in this economy. Best time to buy, to leverage. We're talking with one of our police officers that's moving in the middle of the neighborhood, and as I explained to him, our $12,500 for first-time home buyer program, plus the fact that he's a public safety person, can get him up to $20,000 worth of grants to get in a house that's probably $40,000 or less. You know what his mortgage payments would be at three percent, or 3.9, on $20,000 over thirty years? I mean, it'll earn a hundred bucks, but very close to it. I mean, that allows him to do a lot as he progresses and moves with the police department if he stays here. So, that type of resources, we need to get more of out and educate our citizens more about what the resources we have here currently. And in the governmental agreements, we recognize that there's no way that if a housing council is formed, that there's no way that we could do it on our own, there's no way the city could do it on our own. The impacts of neighborhood decline, housing issues, impacts Spaulding County Board of Education. It does. And I'll submit that most of their dropouts you'll find are located in our declining neighborhoods, and there's a reason for that. And so, as we address these issues, we address the issue of dropout rates. We address the issue of criminal activities in these neighborhoods. So, everybody has a role to play in this, and it's key that we look to bring this plan forward, that everybody recognize that this is the basis for moving forward. It's not just the city's plan, it's the Board of Education's plan, it's the nonprofits, all the folks engaging in our housing-related initiatives. In our short term, looking forward, if we're able to accomplish and work on a housing plan over the next year, and that's something that we want to ask the board to do, and we are looking at creative ways to potentially finance in that, but once again, collaborative efforts between the city and some of the entities that are out here, to designate that single entity that could be out there to be that advocate and help citizens move forward with bringing housing information to them to move them forward. Coordinating those supportive services, working in conjunction with Spaulding Collaborative and their umbrella of entities, DFAX. One of the things we recognize is every time code enforcement goes in a house and we have serious housing issues, there are kids involved. And so, how do we address that issue of making sure that those kids are protected and cared for and put back in a safe environment once that problem has been alleviated? Working with the Salvation Army, because we recognize that where the homeless go, they go to decent entities for shelter as well as food, and working and collaborating with them is important. Coordinating with our regional, state, and federal entities. I mean, one of the things we heard from GIC is, "These folks are going to help us, all we have to do is ask." They'll come down, DCA's been here numerous times to help us. The reward from that has been, we've been successful with grant opportunities beyond a lot of other communities around us, believe. I mean, we've been really blessed with being able to accomplish the $1.5 million in the last three years for our water sewer projects. But that access to technical support is key to moving us forward and helping us, because if we get the state involved, and the state understands where the city of Griffin is going, and we put that plan together, and they address that plan and help us put it together, guess what? Then they know Griffin's serious. So, when we do bring forward grant applications or ask for other assistance, they know Griffin is moving forward with this initiative and that everybody's on board and on the team. The formation of the housing council, that's one of the first things we want to get kicked off starting the new year, and hopefully, this board will see fit to say yes, Mr. Gardner, or yes to the GIC committee, let's look at forming that housing council, who will be on it. And that's something we could talk about at another workshop or another session as to who we'd want to bring. This is a small group, I think it's going to take us adding a few others to make this happen, a cross-section of the housing supportive services spectrum. You know, to help us guide our board of commissioners, our elected officials on housing issues, not just the staff driving it, but an entity that's out there working on the ground, with boots on the ground, that is also coming and advocating. Also, assist them as we're developing that plan. All of these individuals have a stake in the game, but we want them all to have a stake in the same game, on the same field, with the same set of players, and educating, providing that education. I think it's key. Some of the components that typically come in a housing plan, I wanted to just kind of go over real closely with you guys, these are some of the things they're going to be looking at, a snapshot of our community. Looking at the issues of cost burden, in our comprehensive plan that was done back in 2000, 2004, it said that 42% of our residents was cost burden, which means they're paying more than 45 or 50% of their income is going towards housing. That's a huge number, or more than that, is going towards their housing, housing-related issues, rent, mortgage. Looking at our inventory and how do we change our inventory, doing our neighborhood needs assessment, housing trends, and this is just a snapshot, there are a lot more entailing to here, but I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what's entailing that. Doing a true housing market analysis and condition, supportive services, housing policies, obviously, how do we move forward, and a yearly auction plan. So, it gives us a base on where do you go for that first year. These are the things we're going to accomplish, and we look at these things on a yearly basis. A typical comprehensive housing plan is a five-year window, just like this plan was. A five-year window with a yearly auction plan as to what we're going to get accomplished. So, once that plan is adopted, as this group and the entities work that plan, that's something that we could come back before our elected and appointed bodies and say, "This is what we were successful in accomplishing as it relates to housing." Those goals and objectives. Education is going to be key, very important to this, making this work, and how we work with our local media to be advocates for and promote a lot of the stuff that we're doing. I think as the news get out and people get out, and that's incumbent upon each of the district commissioners, as well as our other appointed bodies in their districts, getting out and talking about what's going on and educating folks about the key issues of housing, whether you have a problem or whether you want to take advantage and move forward. And then coordinating with our local entities, I think this is going to be key, that each of those entities have to be on board as we move forward, because they all have a role to play. University of Georgia did the poverty initiative, where is it? Obviously, that didn't work, and we don't want this to flound. We want to be able to utilize what they've done to move us forward. We can't waste another fifteen years.
Have you heard from the collaborative on the money that they got from federal government stimulus funds as to what all their plans have been?
Not on a direct, but I've heard that they've been spending the money, that I do know, that they've been providing, how can I say it, what am I looking for?
Well, they can only pay for-
They've been providing subrecipients the portions of the grant money to do some of the activities that they're engaged in.
Right, they're paying people to collaborate to the community to do these programs.
That is correct.
So, what do you hear from them, anything?
I haven't heard anything from any of the other entities. I've just heard that they have been disseminating the funds based on applications that have been submitted to them to obviously pick pieces of that money, but we haven't had any in-depth conversations with them. And I'm open, I think the group here is also open. If I can't answer a question, if you have any questions, we're all open to answering questions.
I've been in the housing business, unfortunately, for the last twenty years of my life, and I came into this business wide-eyed, bushy-tailed, thinking I could change Griffin, went and ran for office, seventy years, trying to pick up the things that the board of commissioners, which my dad stood on, worked on back then. The frustrating part of the housing business is, when you look at the rents in this study here, they're basically the exact same as they are today, twenty years, fifteen years later. The growth of the rental market has, in terms of the potential of the income, has decreased, but at the same time, the cost of providing a quality product to the citizens, whether it's for homeownership or for rent, keeps going up. Taxes keep going up, the cost of insurance keeps going up, and when you start talking about a collaborative group coming in, working together, and putting all this together, there's a segment of this society that drains our resources, whether it's police, whether it's code enforcement, whether it's folks that continue to destroy property. And until we look at making folks personally responsible, whether it's to take care of their rental property, whether it's to take care, as a renter taking care of the property, we've got to figure out how to educate the citizens that you just can't go into a house and destroy it and do $2,500 worth of damage, and then expect a landlord to be able to pick up the slack and not be able to pass the cost on. And that's where, on the business side, in the business that I'm in, we're getting our butts kicked day after day after day. A perfect example is yesterday, someone comes in raising cane because all their plumbing froze. Water's going into the house, they want us to fix it now. Well, when we get into it, we're going to take care of your plumbing problem, they don't even have their gas turned on of a central heating system to keep the house protected so it doesn't, pipe doesn't freeze, so the house doesn't flood out. And there's a disconnect in terms of- And there's a disconnect in terms of responsibility as a property owner, but also there's a disconnect in regards to the responsibility of the citizens in this community. You know, what right does someone, and you mentioned the officer and it's a blessing that he's gonna move into that neighborhood, but why should the city of Griffin have ten thousand King Cobra bottles laying in the rideways? Why should we have to keep having this segment allowed to live in Griffin, Georgia that do not want to meet a standard? And until we as a commission, till we as a community finally say enough's enough, we're not gonna tolerate drug dealers standing on the street corners, we're not gonna tolerate your kids dropping out of school, until we get mad enough to step up to the plate and say, you either meet a standard in Griffin, Georgia, or get out of Griffin, Georgia. But at the same time, we've gotta figure out how to create jobs, we've gotta figure out how to be fiscally responsible. So, I applaud this group for their hard work the last three years. I've watched you from a distance and, um, it's very exciting the potential that we have and, uh, and anything this board of commissioners can do to support you. But at the same time, we, we've gotta look at it as an entire congregation. How do we all make folks responsible? And, you know, I called Kenny Smith, I heard this police officer wanted to move in that neighborhood. I wanted to get our commissioners over in that neighborhood immediately and start picking up trash and start cleaning up the lots. Here's a guy that says, I'm gonna move into this slumming blighted neighborhood and I'm gonna make a difference. And I looked at him like going, if every one of our citizens had that same approach to life. I mean, I, I stopped by and saw him the other day, I mean, it's just exciting that someone could be fired up about about moving into a piece of hell and to make a difference.
Where are you gonna move?
Of Kentucky.
Kentucky, yeah, yeah. So, um, so I'm excited and thank you, and that's my soaked box, but I'm a hundred percent behind whatever y'all need to make it work and make the quality of housing in Griffin better and empowering our community to be the best place to live.
Frederick, uh, speaking about Kevin Jordan, if I was moved into what Doug called hell, which I call home. In order to change those neighborhoods, you're gonna have to get out there and get involved. Like I had told Kevin, we will be walking the street, I don't know about Doug, but, uh, we will be walking, uh, the neighborhood maybe when he got time, maybe about twice a week, what have you. I ran a program called Community, or in policing, which Chief Strickland had me go over, well, that was Chief Support at the time, to go over in Thomas Emil Village, where they claim that crime real high and all. Once you get into those neighborhoods, I found, people start adjusting to you and start taking to you and getting to know you. It'll make a big difference, and it did over, over in, uh, Thomas Emil Village. I support this program a hundred percent, gentlemen. Uh, it's time that peoples in Griffin get an opportunity to go ahead and become homeowners. It will make a difference, believe that.
Thank you.
I just want to say that, uh, from, from this meeting, that one of the things we found out is that everybody is not gonna be a homeowner. Not everybody wants to be a homeowner. So, uh, we have a component where we understand that even the home record needs to be educated and maybe we need a collaboration of landlords. So that, uh, we have something in, in the program that protects, that helps them protect them too. Um, the mindset that most of us have always had is that we don't wanna help the landlords. But we realize that, um, in order, but the whole organization works, that we have to have a component that supports them too. Because not everybody will be a homeowner and the people that are renting need to understand how to take care of their property too.
And that was one of the key things that we talked about, the issue of not just helping the homeowner, but helping the investor as well. Because it's key, that we recognize that it's a, it's a three-sixty, um, issue. Well, those who rent also have a, have a responsibility in the neighborhood that the same as those who own in order to make the community whole, realizing that we won't get a hundred percent homeowners. But for those who rent, I think it's important that they are still just as much educated about the process of home, of renting, occupying a home and, and being part of a community and a neighborhood.
Well, I think that it's a two-way street. I think, excuse me, having worked on the Habitat, the original Habitat for Humanity Board in nineteen eighty-nine, we only would help, we, we built houses for people to become homeowners and they got low-cost loans. I think part of your job is you need to go back to Habitat and find out how many of these people were able to maintain their homes and find out what the situation actually is when they're not able to, because Habitat also has to foreclose. They have interest-free loans and if the people don't pay, then the Habitat has to take the house back. But the key element of helping people who own their houses is that you are investing in someone who is trying to make a difference by owning a house. Uh, you look, you view landlords differently because it is a, it is a business for them. They have a tremendous responsibility, as far as I'm concerned, to do their part, to give a good product to someone who's renting and give them rules and regulations. I, it is distressing that for so many years we've had so many slum districts in the city of Griffin because we had people that were more interested in getting that, collecting that, uh, weekly rental that they have to go and knock on their doors and get than the person that was there. The money was more important than the person. And until we get realized that the people are as important and we get the landlords on board, if we're gonna be investing in them, then they've got to come forth and show some effort as well, not just Doug, the rest of them. Doug knows the ones that I'm probably referring to.
Yes, ma'am, I'm. If you look back, Frederick, uh, back when Mayor Ward along with Chief Strickland, uh, a lot of the department head got involved, we got into the, uh, community and Clay had the stats on it, you know, about the trash and all, people were, they got involved. People got involved and we started cleaning certain areas, not certain areas, but it was city, right, Chief? Just take that as a nation.
But the question is why doesn't our people, the people of our Griffin, once you go in and clean up a neighborhood, why can't, how do we teach them the values of why do you keep throwing the trash on the street? Why, why, what is the mentality of this, someone else is gonna clean it up? Why can't we engrain in the folks that it's your neighborhood, it's our community? Why do we keep having folks throw the same bottles and the same weed lots? Why can't, those folks that can't meet the standard, we've gotta figure out, say, it's time for you to go if you can't meet our standard. And that's, how do we push that? And how do some communities have that pride, we don't have to worry about that? And we've gotta figure out, how do we make that contact?
And that, and that's gonna come through education and part of, you know, part of this whole process. I think when we look at the component of education and awareness, that it, it doesn't just.
Development. We've gotta build character in this town and make it happen. Without point fingers, without blaming it on race, blaming it on economics, a poor-fort person can take care of the community just as well as a upper-income person and.
Well, I think that in all neighborhoods you have people. I live in a neighborhood that's probably, uh, close to a hundred percent homeownership. There's rarely, three out of, or maybe even four days out of seven, I will go out and, and pick up a beer bottle or a beer can or a wrapper from a fast-food restaurant that someone's thrown out the window. I mean, you know, that's, so therefore you can't just say, you know, these people need care.
But you have a personal, but you have a personal responsibility to do your part.
I pick up my, I pick it up from the bus, that's what I do. And if, and think if I could ever catch them, boy, I'd like to put out a row of nails across that road and really. Yeah, but, uh, you know, it's, personal responsibility crosses income levels and everything else.
Yes, it is.
But, uh, if you can, if you're effective in, in getting this housing council that you can work with the people who are renting, or the people who rent to people and give them an education, I think that, that you've got a good start there.
I think, I think everybody's basically saying the same thing. Uh, and when you get to the root of it, uh, what you're saying, Mr. Holberg, I don't believe any human being is, is just born destructive. I think somewhere, somewhere down the line, something happened, uh, to create, to cause that person to, to act in such a manner. But I also agree with you on, on the character development. We have to support, uh, people in the neighborhood, there's plenty of people in the neighborhood that are trying to make an attempt to do something about character development, we're just not supporting them. So we have to find those groups and support them. And also my, my final comment is on the, on the crime in the area. Uh, in my opinion, uh, we're dealing with a, a police department that's, uh, that's underpaid and overworked, but they're doing an excellent job. And I take my hat off to, to Griffin Police Department, they're doing an excellent job. When you look at, uh, other cities that are, um, nearby and, and you compare it with Griffin, Griffin is doing an excellent job. So, uh, we just have to, I think we just have to support, uh, and find ways to support, uh, groups that are doing that.
Well, what we're gonna do is take a lot of the comments we heard today and, and put together, I guess, a formation of, of what that housing council would look like and bring it back before this board and, uh, board to adopt them as a, as a, as a true council, not a committee or, or board, and that, that's something that y'all might wanna look at. Um, just trying to stay away from another board, per se, you know, the tree board and all those other boards. I'm trying to stay away from a lot of that, but i- if that's what you guys want to coin it, that's fine. Um, I think the ultimate goal is to get the process moving forward, what we call it. That's, I think this group is open, um, to whatever the board wants to look at at us. But we just said a housing council, just to get away from the stigma of committees and boards.
Ms. Todd mentioned about a possible, you know, home, uh, landlords association, I think. If there was a, and this council has a fundraising part in terms of helping fund this council, if they put a network where folks that are bad renters, that are folks that are, that continually mooch off society in terms of a, like almost a credit bureau, there used to be this organization called, um, Griffin Credit Bureau, which is no longer where you basically pay dues to and things in terms of your credit check and things like that on. But if there was a, a network or a central box where you could check on folks in regards to how they take care of property, if they are a problem in the neighborhood, it could be that they are, um, excessive police problems and things like that. I mean, just a net, a database of information that could be assorted, and I don't know if that's legal for governmental entities to do that, but if, you know, match court, you can call up and say, has Joe Smith ever had dispossessory action? They can type in Joe Smith and give you a quick summary of what their rental history is and things. If there was a, a group that put information in together where Holberg Properties or Housing Authority or whoever called into could say, what is Joe Smith's rental history and a, a network where people could put information in in terms of their rental history? Of what they do and things like, I mean, what, do they pay the rent? Do they take care of the property or do they they cause problems and mayhem every two months from one neighborhood to the next neighborhood? Eventually you could possibly push those folks.
Do you all not have a record of, of house homes? Do you have, is it a, is it a pretty good prevailing situation?
Oh, I mean, we put out five demos a week. I mean, it's that, but it's just not a network. They go to somebody else and they destroy their property, go to the next person. And if there was a way to coordinate housing needs, and it could even be, I think it'd be a good tool that the community, the business community would support by paying dues based on, and we've talked about this, but no one's ever taken the initiative, but actually paying dues, if you own hundred rental properties, you would pay a certain fee per month into this association.
Uh, Mr. Holberg, I think that's kind of, uh, what you're getting into now. I think that's kind of something that's, that, that you should do personally.
Well, this is a housing, this is a house.
Yeah, but you spend a lot of time with, with, within this meeting, that, that probably is something that you need to be doing personally. I think this, this time could be better spent, um, on, on the issue at hand.
The issue is business has to make money to be able to put money back into their product.
I understand that, but that's something, that's your personal business, what you're referring to. And we spend a lot of time being concerned about your personal business, and we need to be concerned about the business at hand.
That, that idea kinda sounds like the, uh, what the collaborative was doing with the churches, the, essentially in that, the amount that they will give out, you know, to help utility bills and things like that. As far as I understood, they were maintaining a database of they've been to this church. And so when they go to the next church, are they asking, you know, are they just hitting multiple churches, that sort of thing? Kinda sounds similar to that.
Well, the, the Spaulding Samaritans kinda started that, uh, but they have been doing it at First Baptist. I know the benevolence committee at First Baptist has been doing it for years, coordinating it with other, you know, as far as assistance. Probably the good database would be those that help with utility payments. And, uh, and I'm sure that that is also, uh, the, uh, there are many organizations out there that help people. Tremendous organizations, practically every church has a chairman of, of something like that. Uh, you've got a great source, just calling the churches and finding out and they can tell you how many times they helped certain individuals. Uh, it's, uh, it's very easy to find out. But they do, they go, you know, and then churches have a situation where they're not into the lawful saying, well, you got a bag of groceries last week, you're not eligible for something, uh, for another three months or six weeks. If there's a desperate need there, the church is gonna fill it. That's different than rules and regulations, you know? That's something y'all, that could be taken into effect later on.
All right, getting back on track, it appears to me that consensus is that, uh, moving ahead with this formation of a housing council, it is majority well with this board. So, we can beat this horse as long as we want, but that's where we're going with this, right?
Yes, sir.
That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, thank you, Frederick.
Appreciate your support, thank you.
Is that Chairman gonna come back up here? If not, we'll go ahead and review the agenda before we go into closed session.
Okay, under Presentations and Delegations tonight. Oh, before that even, the Pledge of Allegiance, I believe we have a scout group that will be here tonight.
Group of citizenship and community will be here to talk to Mayor Ward about introducing them.
All right, and then under Presentations and Delegations, we have our Employee of the Month that we'll recognize tonight. We wanna recognize Mr. Francis in the Central Services Department as they won the Chamber Cut for the Best Overall Float in the Christmas Parade. The first time they entered, they won the, the big prize.
Who says trash won't come to the top, huh?
That's right.
I guess.
They're all floating.
All of our employees who participated in the Leadership Development Institute will be here tonight for you to congratulate them as they graduate from that internal training program. And then we have a proclamation to, uh, recognize outgoing School Board Chairman, Ms. Fanny Delaney, tonight. And do we know if she'll be here, Judy, or? Okay.
She actually does, she doesn't actually live within the city limits, does Fanny?
No.
Cause I thought she'd make a great board member, but I guess we can't put her on the city board.
Uh, we have three public hearings scheduled for tonight. And if Mr. Gardner is prepared, we can quickly, uh, look at those and see if you have any questions on those.
Have you had any comments from East College Street residents about the proposed medical center?
Uh, we started feeling phone calls, uh, yesterday and I think Friday, we received two phone calls from individuals who said they were gonna come to the meeting to voice their concerns about it.
The parking issue, is that, is there enough room for parking?
They have enough room, they have overage of parking based on the design that they gave us, there's an overage of parking. Um, there are about twenty parking spaces beyond, thank you, beyond the number of parkings that is required by ordinance based on the size of the building. Uh, so that's covered on the, from that standpoint.
And that'll, their parking, their driveway will come in from College Street, not off Terrace Dell?
That is correct. The, the driveway off of Terrace Dell will continue to serve the residential component of the development. The medical office will be served off of East College. The entrance is going to be directly across from Fifth Street. So when you come, you'll be looking at a ninety-degree with the intersection of Fifth and College.
Well, heaven knows we could use some tax space and some jobs. Those medical community jobs are good ones.
So, you have like a, it's kind of a site plan or?
Yes, they did submit a site plan. Um, I apologize if you didn't get a copy of it, but we'll make, I'll make some color copies and make it up.
Kind of where the layout of the building and all that ideas.
We'll make that available to you guys this afternoon.
Uh, was he aware, aware that we just created a medical overlay zone around the hospital? I mean, if Dr. Remington.
I didn't mention, I didn't make mention of it. Uh, however, uh, I think saying that he owned this piece of property.
Yeah, he's owned it quite a while.
Yeah, he's, he's wanted to move forward on this, but we didn't make mention of it and some of the, the carrots that involved with the, uh.
I mean, cause I thought that's what we wanted to do was to, you know, get it close to the hospital.
So that's, this'll be a rezoning and a special use for Dr. Remington to address the development of this building. Does y'all want me to go into more detail? Does y'all want me to go into more detail about it?
All right, you owe us all lunch, I figure. That's the rules of meetings I run. Phone goes off, you owe us a meal.
Right, I hear you. Hello?
And then she asked me. Go ahead, Kenny.
The other item is a variance at the airport. The Civil Air Patrol, Mr. Kimberly, John Kimberly is requesting a variance to allow for the placement of two FEMA trailers at the site of the existing building. Staff had recommended denial of this request. We've met out there, staff, airport manager himself, Mr. Smith. We've taken some feedback from the Civil Air Patrol and came up with an alternative location that I think would be, in terms of the temporary nature of this, in keeping with the aesthetics of the airport, that if they're able to move the trailers behind the existing building, that that would work. And we spoke with Mr. Kimberly, and he said that he think they have enough space to make that happen. So, but we did recommend a denial of it. But that's up to the board, as the board wants to.
You said they did or did not have room behind the building?
They do. They, due to the measurements, he said that they can actually place the trailers behind the building, the existing building, if you're looking at it. To the south side, it'll be between the tree line and the existing building and Airport Road, so you wouldn't be able to see it unless you're moving west on Airport Road. You'll have a brief glimpse of it in conjunction with the existing building. There's space in there for them to be able to put it, when we measured it out. And there might be room to put it actually behind, north of, behind the existing building. There's some room for them to get the other trailer in there, based on our measurements.
Is that airstream trailer still out there? Is the airstream trailer still out there? They had an airstream trailer out there forever.
There's a, there's a small semi that's back there. It's not a semi, but more of a mobile, military mobile command type thing. It's pretty small. It's back there now.
I wouldn't agree to this unless we put a time limit on it.
And that's one of the things we discussed, that if the board does approve it, that we would want to have them put it in place for a year or two years with renewal, based on how long we're going to have the existing airport there.
Well, that's the issue that these folks are faced. They have grown this program for young people. It's a great program, and they've increased the, way beyond their capacity to deal with so many young people. But with the potential of moving the airport to our new location, they, it would be foolish to build a new building or do something permanent, not knowing if we're gonna move. So I think this is a good compromise. If we do this for a couple of years, do we see if the new airport's gonna happen, and then either renew it if it is, or ask for a permanent location eventually. So this is kind of a compromise that there was.
I have no problem with the CAP whatsoever. I would caution that they need not to be visible to the residents that live across the street there. I think that that would be a disservice to put trailers across from someone's resident's house. And even though I may not, you know, approve of the condition of a lot of things, but I think that, I, and I love the CAP, you know, but I also realize that there has to be a time limit on it.
Yes, ma'am. And from the locations, that we're, that we looked at, the possibility, especially, we looked at this a couple of weeks ago, which means that the foliage is already basically fallen off most of the trees out there that are not evergreens. It's really hard, difficult for you to be able to see it. I mean, across from the residence. If you're able to see it, it'll be when you come from the intersection of Hill, you're making that left-hand turn onto Airport. You'd have a belief, you'll be able to glimpse it as you're going down, but as you come parallel with the actual building, it's gonna be very difficult. The foliage in there is still very much thick, even at this point in time.
All right. We just turned down a development. Are we approved, I don't know if we approved it or not, where the man was gonna come in and wanted to put trailers in for daycare center or something like that, over on one of the streets. Yeah, you remember that?
I thought we did the industrial.
We turned it down.
I thought we approved the industrial.
We approved it, but we didn't, there's no provision for him.
We said no trailers.
And there's no provision for him on our ordinance to be able to put one in, in the configuration that he was asking for.
Yeah.
But he could get one in if it meets the specification of our ordinance. Our ordinance don't prohibit the use of modular vehicles.
We did prohibit it when we voted on it.
Well, yes, as part of the zoning condition, we did.
What is Airport Advisory Board? Is this on actual airport land?
Yes.
Is the Airport Advisory Board taking a position?
No, not as I know. No, they have none.
Is this something on the Airport Advisory Board?
No, I don't think we have any problem. The issue is, don't wanna approve a permanent location, make this temporary for a couple of years till we sort out the new airport.
And make sure that it's busted from the resident across the street.
Yeah, so, condition won't be two-year minimum?
You can, my motion's gonna be approve it for two years, and then it's up for renewal. By that time, we'll know what's gonna happen with the airport, hopefully.
And not visible from?
Not visible, right, from the residential area across the street, who has tried to get it done commercial and got, gets turned down, 'cause that's county. That's not city. And, but nevertheless, we still need to be aware that of property rights is on.
Well, where they're gonna put it back there, the new location, is virtually, you can't see it from across the road, I don't think, from where that guy is.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item are our minutes, workshop, goal session, and regular meeting. Any corrections?
I found them to be accurate. Let somebody else found some issues.
In the UGA section, I think Mr. Morrow actually stated that they had the seven bachelor degree programs and three master degrees. I didn't say that, so somebody else.
Wait a minute. What?
In the UGA section, on the last page.
Of the goal session?
Yeah, that second line.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't make that statement, but I think.
On which set of minutes, I'm sorry?
On the workshop.
The goals workshop, page four, top of the page.
All right, hold on. Goals workshop, page four. I'm getting there.
What did you say, Ryan? Do you remember?
Well, I mean, the first lines to that effect, and the last line. I think Dick came in and made the comment about what they actually had there.
Oh, the second part of that I said, huh?
First part of the second sentence, we'll attribute to Mr. Morrow, and then we'll.
And then in the, in the blight part, I think, so there's, for the, on the first page, I think it's three hundred and seventy-four total. On that two thousand eight housing survey, I think it's three hundred and seventy-four instead of two eighty.
How many?
Three seventy-four instead of the two eighty.
Three seven four.
Wow.
Okay. Any other corrections? We'll have that corrected for you by tonight. Okay, we skip over to item twelve, which is the first reading of an ordinance to amend unfit buildings and structures in regard to Senate Bill three eighty-four that mandated some changes as they relate to pre-owned manufactured homes.
Is the Curly ordinance states that we do not allow them for any reason, or you can't put them in certain districts?
I think you can't put them in certain districts, but.
But you know, like you have like a time frame.
This is a change in state law, which, when they enacted the law, they directed the local governments, adopted by ordinance, so that's why we do it. So, I don't really, we don't really see these, you know, this coming up.
But I think you can no longer outlaw home based on the number of years, in terms of an age moving into a community that.
Right, I think.
There used to be a five, like Spalding County, you can't bring a five-year-old mobile home into your community. And this basically would, based on condition versus.
I think this is more of an issue that's come up in rural areas with Georgia, not so much here. Well, the bottom line is, the state passed a law, says we gotta do it, so.
That's it.
Doesn't make any difference whether we agree or disagree.
You mean, we have to go along with everything our, the law tells us to do?
No, there were.
We try to.
Why can't you just cover it down there?
One of the.
Guy created.
Any other questions on item twelve?
Created twelve, don't hurt people.
No.
Okay. Item thirteen is a submittal of an application to DCA requesting an expansion of our Southwest Overlay Opportunity Zone to cover the Medical Overlay District.
Can you have a little map of that, too?
Of the district? Yes, I can get one to you. That's no problem. I can get that to you, Commissioner. This is, last year, we submitted an application for Opportunity Zone to cover the airport, and working in conjunction with Mr. Lucky, the Development Authority, the old NACOM building, to allow for the job tax credit. What we wanna do is basically extend this to include our Medical Overlay District as one of the incentive programs that we wanna put in place to incentivize the redevelopment and the medical uses within the medical district. So we just wanna expand that opportunity over, submit that back to DCA, and get them approved of it.
There was lots of activity over at the NACOM building yesterday. Got me kind of excited.
Were they still on air conditioners?
Well, no, there was somebody present. I would think that's a common event. Maybe it's because.
I'm scared of activity anymore.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, item number fourteen.
She fits that one.
She did. Were they?
Item number fourteen is the approval to purchase seven new police vehicles. We originally budgeted for six in our budget to buy three with cash and to buy three through the GMA lease program. Because of some pricing concessions, we were actually able to get four with cash and lease three.
Good.
So we're gonna get an extra one.
Love a deal.
And those are being purchased through our local Dodge dealership. Item number fifteen is to acknowledge a receipt of the Georgia Humanities Council grant an amount of three thousand dollars. This is a grant, the application we had submitted to get three thousand dollars for our Welcome Center Doc Holiday exhibit in conjunction with our tourism initiatives.
We'll take the money.
Item number sixteen is approval of our annual consolidated buy to update our in-house computers.
Ryan could use one of the old ones, I can.
Saved a little bit there, again, from our budgeted amount.
How often do we update those?
We have a replacement plan annually. Not all of them. We have certain of those that go out a life cycle each year. So it's kinda like the police cars, we replace a few of them a year. Item number seventeen is approval of a purchase for the Solid Waste Division for an F-250 truck.
That's amazing price on that. I was, I don't know how you got that for that low a price, but I'm impressed.
Item number eighteen is a resolution for acquisition of stormwater easements to replace a storm drain between Second and Third Street. That thing is basically caved in on us, and we're having to go in and replace the whole stormwater drain. And this is just some easements that we'll need to work in that area.
This is an extension of the one that you replaced, Fifth Street there going down, that just continued, continuation?
There is already one there, which is a for gate that looks like the rod out, the bottom rod out, the last two meters.
Yeah, I understand, but is this the same system goes by berries down there, just continuation?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Special listing of owners and the amounts.
That's the line, man.
That's down by Louise's.
No. That's the third street.
Between Second, Second, Third Street, all Wall Street.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
That's a major line for coming out downtown.
And item number nineteen's in conjunction with that, that's the actual awarding of the bid and the construction contract for that project in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and eight dollars.
Hold on. My suspense with all these, these questions.
And I'm trying to get to the next one, which is, item number twenty is approval of another Ford F-250 for the Stormwater Department.
Oh, one question. Why is it just a regular F-250 more than the F-250 four-by-four?
That's my question, too. Good question. It doesn't.
Uh, no, it's forty, it's a four-by-four. I don't know why it didn't get in there. It's got, the one for Stormwater Department is a diesel power, four-by-four, they need to deal with the tolls and taxes, and also work that in the front, you know, I don't know, from the, they must have found a way, so that isn't a four-by-four, but it's a diesel.
So it's a four-by-four diesel. That's why.
Yeah, the diesel adds about forty-four hundred dollars to the bottom line. If you look on your.
Same question I did. I thought that was good.
Well, we females don't know much about vehicles, so we need to find a man to do that.
Yeah.
Oh, we're back to the Flickett stuff. I love the Flickett stuff.
Item number twenty-one is the purchase of a whatever duplex control panel for Show Creek, a Flickett or whatever you call it.
Love the Flickets.
What's the pronunciation of that?
I don't know.
Flight, uh-huh, that's what I thought, uh-huh.
Don't tell anybody that. I like Flickets better.
Yeah.
Item number twenty-two is an agreement for relocation of facilities between DOT and City of Griffin, which is relocation of some electric facilities on North Expressway from Ellis to La Prada, where they're doing a widening project. And we filed hardship on that and got a fifty-fifty split on it.
Yeah, this is about the second or third time we've revisited this same project here.
Are you gonna do the work in-house or bid it out?
We're doing the work, and that money'll basically cover our supplies.
Good job.
Number twenty-three is award bid in our contract for Century Energy Services for our solar project at Harry Simmons.
This is a unique and interesting project. I hope we get a little publicity on it, so folks can see what we're doing out there. I think this is, this is special, if you will.
And even though the item summary doesn't say it, the cost is one sixty-five oh sixty-seven.
One sixty-five oh sixty-seven, but this is part of a grant span for.
Item number twenty-four is approval of the electric rate schedule, as we discussed in our workshop at the last meeting. And basically, the copy that you have there is the option two that we discussed at the last meeting, and those are the summary of those particular rate structures.
I'd like to ask a few questions, just to understand a little bit better in my mind about, about this. And I might need Marcus to help out. But essentially, out of the three point five million that we were talking about, essentially being passed down to us, two point eight of that is for, because they have to close down for ninety days?
Yeah, actually, we have four items to settle, and two of them are environmentally possible, that's a fundamental that we have to pay for. And actually, when those plants are shut down, we will experience having to use our assets, which affects our asset sales. So we will not be able to sell on the market for three point five is the overall impact that we estimate that it will, will be on.
Okay.
Bill, you might wanna come up here so we can get you.
On the audited financials, when we look on page nineteen for the Electric Utility Fund, and we looked at the unrestricted net assets, what kind of considerations do we, the board, need to keep in mind with, with that number? What kind of future considerations do we need to be thinking about?
Are you talking about the trust?
No, not, unless the trust is combined into the. No, not, unless the trust is combined into the Electric Utility Fund. Uh, I'm talking about the unrestricted net assets.
The unrestricted net assets would be a function of the current liabilities that are outstanding and any cash that is in the unrestricted cash accounts, which on a monthly basis we get a breakdown of our cash balances, but there are dollars that have been set aside for liabilities that we incurred throughout the year and throughout the, throughout the cycle. But if you'd like, I can get you a more detailed explanation of exactly what those numbers are made up of because we have the restricted component and we have the unrestricted. Some of that is earmarked through purchase orders. Some of it is earmarked through the investments on the MEAG side. And some of it is restricted towards the, the, uh, power generation and the, uh, dedicated short-term portfolios.
So, are those trusts in that number?
I'll have to get you the details because there are liabilities that are out there that are unrestricted and some that are restricted. So, the cash that's there, a, a portion of it is and a portion of it is not. I'll have to get you the breakdown.
Okay.
Give it to all of us, Marcus.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Um... What, and this is more of a overall, what is, what played into the makeup of the transfer to the general fund?
Sure. Let me get that for you. That's in the notes. If we go to page fifty-six, there are transfers that have been made between various funds. On note nine, it shows basically the inter-fund balances and transfers. The first section, just follow that across, general fund, non-major wastewater, electric. And if you go to the second section, and if you were to lift that over and match that up in line with electric and just carry that, those, that second paragraph across the page, we would see that out of electric, if we go down in the left-hand column, transfer from, and that's line one, two, three, four, and we go across to the first column with the, with the value in there, general fund. This audit document shows that we transferred out of electric 15.7 million. That being said, please bear in mind that we have our payroll clearing account inside the general fund. So, the bulk of the payroll is gonna come through there. We also have funds that come in through the combined utility account. So, monies are gonna come into the combined utility account for water, for wastewater, et cetera. And now the cash, as it comes in, will predominantly be used to cover payroll and the liabilities because that's gonna be our primary clearing account. And then, if we continue on to, uh, go, go down to that second section there and transfer from, you see general fund, then go down to electric?
Yeah, I guess ultimately what I'm getting at is on page fifteen, when you look at the general column and you essentially see that, which I think is good, but you essentially see that net change in fund balance is 1.34 million and that's essentially a function of our transfer. What dictate, what said to us to do 1.34 million more in that transfer than what was actually, you know, the net?
Okay, we, we transferred, let, let me see, let me finish addressing the, uh, the transfer issue because we transferred out of, uh, general fund. We didn't transfer anything. However, out of electric, we transferred from water and wastewater back to electric. We transferred 7.2 million dollars. And then, if we follow towards the end there, we show a net of roughly 5.6 million dollars net effect coming out of the electric fund to general fund.
Alright.
And these numbers are grossed up because we capture the gross dollars going in and then we have another account for the gross dollars coming out. So, we track each highway separate. So, we can see the activity coming through. And I realize this creates a lot of questions. How come there's so much money flowing through in and through the account? That's because in the electric fund, the combined utility account holds all the cash for all utilities. Payroll is housed in the general fund. So, we're gonna have a lot of activity going back and forth. And we are working with our, our software vendor to devise a new methodology that will then pull these transactions onto a different page, if you will, so that we can segregate the payroll-related issues and segregate the cash transfer issues a little bit differently.
So, the total...
I mean, ultimately though, yeah, I mean, I get that really what we want near that part, which went back to Doug's discussion a while ago, is just operating transfers, just straight-out operating transfers on the rest of the balance sheet. But I'm still getting back to the net effect of this, which is the transfer amount to the general fund that adds to fund balance, 1.34 million. And that's why I was just trying to understand what was the, again, I think that's a good thing, but I was just trying to understand what the logic was behind that number versus say you transfer exactly what...
Well, if we're gonna look at that, that increase of 1.3 million fund balance in the general fund, we also have to go back and look at the changes from last year to this year on the composition of cash, the composition of our, our receivables and the composition of the liabilities that exist on the books. We've received quite a bit of cash through the lease proceeds for the, for the, um, fire truck. That was a half a million dollars, close to. We received monies from grants that we incurred expenses on through CDVG that run through the general fund because it's part of public works-related, uh, activity. We received, uh, planning development, received grants through the, uh, through the GIC program. And so, there are expenses that are housed there in the general fund and are also recorded in the, the, uh, the trust fund. So, we're gonna have a little bit more cash and running back and forth to the general fund, but eventually, that cash, that increase in fund balance will end up going away because we have liabilities that have already been earmarked towards those dollars that may not have gotten paid in time by the end of the fiscal year because we're on a accrual basis of accounting. I mean, the board is, as well.
But ultimately, those liabilities would have the expense recorded in the same year.
If the, if the liabilities have been accrued, then the expense has been matched up. The timing of which, then the cash hasn't been depleted, you'll see a little bit increase in cash and investments there. What I'd like to do is have the opportunity to go back and compare the 2009 financials audits with the 2010 and give you a, a better analysis or synopsis of the changes in the activity from year to year. Uh, the, the financial statements do provide a cash flow analysis on the utility side, side of the house. It does not provide that sources and uses of, of cash flow statement for the general fund. But we can put something together. It's a common question that you're asking. So, we can look to pull a document together that'll kind of capsulate in bullet form. Here's the key, key generator. Now, in, in the management's MDNA, there are some key highlights on page three that basically indicate that the, uh, the city's assets exceeded its liabilities at the close of the fiscal year by $91 million. That's, in other words, net assets. Of this amount, $30 million is unrestricted. And then also, the city's net assets increased by roughly about 10.3 million and that's the net. Uh, as of, as of the close of the fiscal year, the governmental funds reported combined ending fund balance of $7 million, which is a 3.9 million dollar increase. And the governmental funds includes, uh, the, the, the non-major, like the, the Welcome Center, that's a special revenue, but it's a governmental side. We have the, um, the, the motor pool, the internal service funds that are part of that. And then, uh, the city's total debt decreased by 2.1 million and that's predominantly due to the fact that we are looking towards acquiring, like the, the vehicles that we're trying to buy now, we're trying to maximize the dollar in cash rather than taking on additional debt. Now, I don't know if this directly answers your question, but it, we will get...
Probably way beyond it. True way. I can't wait for the audit discussion.
Yeah, I think we went beyond and, and to the audit part. Essentially, I mean, I'm trying to still understand that because, you know, any liability, I mean, you know, that page is not about cash flow. That, that page is about...
Sure.
You know, if there's liabilities out there that we have to cover with cash, well, that, you know, that's balance sheet and that's the expense that's booked on there. So, essentially, we're adding the fund balance in general fund of 1.34 million.
Right.
Um, you know, it, adding the fund balance is fine. I mean, we need it. It's for cash flow reasons. It's a good thing to be able to do if it's a function of, we just had that opportunity with that transfer to finally do that. Whereas I know that hasn't been done and hardly in, in years and I guess for a long time. You're all working up from a negative position.
Yes.
That's fine. I was just trying to get a concept of where 1.3 came from so it kind of reconciled in my mind.
Going back, uh, a, a few years back and Mr. Holberg and quite a few of the commissioners here, they, the city was in a negative fund balance position. And since I've been here and I know since Mr. Smith's been here, the city's been working very diligently to better manage dollars so that we can turn that negative position around, which we have been slowly. It's like a, a large vessel out at sea, a cruise ship or an aircraft carrier that's out there that's going along its course. And to alter course, you gotta turn that rudder hard, but you're not gonna be able to turn that ship at that ninety-degree angle. It's going to slowly drift into that direction as we guide it.
They get a plane that they get out.
And that's, that's the direction we've been wanting to go for, for quite a long time. Uh, we do have, that being said, there are things that the city is going to encounter with just in the nature of the, the course of business that we need to be prepared for, uh, financial issues and constraints that may happen in, in the future. So, economics, better to hold that on, onto that a little bit today and then be prepared for tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Doug, do you have something to, to give my next?
I can't wait for, uh, we get...
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Need to do the audit.
We have the auditor scheduled to be here the second meeting in January to go over that in, in more detail.
Until then, we'll, uh, we won't worry about the aircraft carrier.
Uh, well, Ryan may not be finished.
I don't.
No, it was just, uh, some other little things.
Are you asking where the 1.3 million dollars extra cash that went into the general fund came from so that...
No, I know where it came from. I was just asking why 1.3.
1.3?
But...
Justifying why we need to have a rate increase when we could have put it...
Well, we're mixing apples and oranges, sir. There's, there's two components. One is the function of, of the general fund. The other one is part of the enterprise funds. So, the, the general fund, if we also look back at our budget to actual, and I may be speaking out of turn. I'm, I'll go out on a limb here.
Yes, you are.
Our budget to actual variances.
I know it's almost the exact amount of the budgeted transfer, operating transfer that we were looking at to get to general fund. And that's why I was wondering maybe it was a function of just matching it to our budget or... But I'm okay.
What I wanted to say is that we are, we are approximately with, with, when we look at the debt service line over there on page eighteen, uh, debt service and then deficiency of revenues under expenditures. Our actual came in at, our, our total revenues came in at 18 million. The budget was at 17.4. So, there's $750,000 contributing there. If we look at the total expenditures, our, our budget was 24 million. We came in at 23 million. There's another $800,000 right there. So, between the revenues coming in where they need, where we, we were conservative in our estimates and our, our property taxes came in where we sort of anticipated, maybe a little bit higher. And the fun fact that we cut expenditures, which was the mandate by Mr. Smith throughout the department, there's one and a half million dollars right there.
Right.
That, that contributed towards the better management and the increase in that fund balance in the general fund.
Right. It's still a function of the transfer, but yeah, I mean, because you were under, you had enough, you still transferred essentially the same amount and that's what add to the fund balance. You know, I mean, we were under-expensed on our, on our budget, which led to a lesser need of that transfer. Again, I'm saying it's a good, good thing. I'm glad there was, you know, money added to fund balance. I'm just...
So, if we, if we, Mr. Macklemore, if we look at page eighteen and look at the transfers in line and then look at the transfers out, for the budget, we've estimated roughly 6.1 million dollars on the final column. Then in the, that third column, we show we transferred in 15.7 and transferred out 10 million. So, that leaves roughly fifteen, uh, 5.6 million dollars. So, if we budgeted 6 million and we transferred in only 5.6, we transferred in less than what we budgeted by about 400,000. So, if we take the function of the, the, the revenue coming in at over our estimates and the cost-cutting measures and the fact that we transferred in less money, that's purely, from this perspective, an operational, a function of, of efficiencies built into the operations. At least that's my...
All right. Let's go back to item twenty-four. We got pretty far afield.
I need to move on what they...
I, I don't know how...
The next item on the agenda.
Agenda. The rate increase. I think option two is a logical reasonable step. And, um, I have no problem with it. It's a very minor increase, but it keeps our budget intact. We've already cut and cut and cut.
And it benefits those that are smaller consumers in the long run. It doesn't put the burden upon them. It basically...
And if I may, this, this is just the start of what we're gonna be going through. Next year, we already have an estimate of about a 1.8, uh, percent increase that we're gonna have to deal with. Um, and also, Mr. Macklemore, um, part of the energy, uh, estimates that we do, um, is a science, but it's sometimes it's also throwing a dart at the board with fuel prices and different variables that go into us setting what our estimates are. Uh, last year, we had an extremely, um, decent year as far as with the summer months and then we also had a compounding that we had low fuel prices. So, in short, that's, um, those two things probably go into why we have a little extra in the fund balance that you're talking about because we did have a decent year in electric. But in saying that, uh, fuel prices are very volatile right now. We have a lot of, um, plant maintenance that we're gonna do this next year and also in the years to come. So, what, what I'm asking for in this option two is just the first step. And one, repairing our rates from 1996, that we've never had a rate increase. This will put our rates more in line. It will keep it competitive on our, uh, small business and also industrial, our CNI customers. But then it also brings our PCA down below what the ECG average is. So, it puts us in a good position going into the years to come as far as any decisions we have to make next year and for the next two or three years because it, we're in a very, very quick, sandish, uh, period of time right now. So, we just gotta make sure that we position ourselves where we can make the right decisions and it all starts with this rate increase or rate adjustment.
And this is our proactive share of, of what has happened with MEAG.
Exactly.
It's not, uh, you know, it's, it's just Griffin. It's the other 49 cities that are involved and that the liability, the mandate that came down to MEAG and this is our share.
And our share is relatively small compared to what most of the cities are feeling. They're feeling anywhere from a 10 to a 30% increase and we're below that. So, yeah.
Good.
The, the base rate, that is the $12. That's ju, that's not based up to some usage level. It's just 12, usage plus $12.
Yep.
What are these other rates they're including in here? The $20 and all of that, uh...
I don't know what you're looking at.
I'm looking at the accompanying pages on page, uh, for item, agenda item twenty-four. You've got, on page one, we've got the $12 rate and then you go to the other rate. You got, well, I guess it all has to do with medium power, industrial, et cetera.
Yes, ma'am. The first page is residential and the second page is small power without a demand and then medium. All different classifications. All different classifications.
But it keeps going up each year. So we're voting on all of this, not, I mean, not just the residential.
Oh, yes, ma'am. These are all different areas of usage. Your industrial, your large power, your small power, medium power, residential.
Those are the actual rate sheets. If you look at your breakdown, it will actually show you in a flash what those rates mean to the customer.
Now, how are we going to get the word out about this adjustment? I think that's been a problem.
It's been in the paper. Our last meeting, three weeks ago, it's been in the paper, I believe.
Normally, we either put a note on the statement. We'll either put a note or we'll put a stuffer in with the bills, one or the other. Depends on how much language we can fit onto the state.
So we'll hit the paper.
I'm for the adjustment. I just want somebody else to explain.
And I think one of the things we've started.
On the bottom of the bill, we'll put your phone number.
Thanks, Mr. Smith. And I will, I will give you in the next day or two some talking points and bullet points that you can talk to your constituents about when you're asked about it in the future.
Any other questions on 24? If not, we'll move on to more simpler things. And that 25 is a request for a lease renewal with Becco and Murray. As you know, they take our top floor of One Griffin Center. They came in wanting to make an early renewal on their lease for an additional five years if we would hold their rent the same. The proposal is to hold their rent the same for the first five years. They have two five-year options after that and those options would include a 3% increase.
Does that see our advantage to our advantage to?
Amen.
I feel like it's our advantage to lock them in for five additional years as to their advantage to be able to keep the lease price the same. However, that lease price is pretty comparable to the square.
What is their current lease price, say? How much would go in?
It doesn't.
It doesn't?
No, ma'am. Actually, we assumed their lease. They had just signed a new lease with Wachovia when we bought the building and assumed the lease. So this will be the first lease that will totally be in our name.
Do you have any idea what our, what the average floor is to utilities that we currently pay? I mean, what we.
No, sir. I don't have it. We'd have to break down the utility cost per square foot and then multiply it back out for each tenant's square footage and I haven't done that.
What's a floor's square footage? What is it?
I believe the square footage on that lease is, they say 5,200 square foot.
Thank you.
We've never been up there and measured it. We took that from the previous leases.
Now, these trying to, if we can keep a tenant for five years, I think it just.
Yeah, so that was kind of my opinion as well. Item number 26 is the approval of the hospital authority expenditure of funds. As you know, they have grant funds that they give out every year and it is required that we approve those commitments, somewhat of a formality. Okay. Item number 27 is a license agreement with State Bank and Trust of Macon. This was an agreement we had with the old Coca-Cola bottling company where we maintained ingress and egress to property over behind that building for our water tower. As you know, State Bank and Trust Company has assumed ownership of that facility. So we just wanted to put that agreement in their name instead of the old Coca-Cola bottling company. Item number 28 is approval of a new ordinance. We're basically deleting the old downtown parking ordinance and replacing it with a new parking ordinance, which essentially eliminates the two-hour restrictions on downtown parking based on our discussion at our workshop last month. I did send letters out to the chairman chair persons of the Main Street Program, the Downtown Development Authority and the Downtown Council to advise them that we were considering this change.
Did you get any comments back?
Have not heard a word from anybody thus far, but just to give you a heads-up in case some of those entities have some comments either tonight or at a later date. And even though your item summary doesn't say it, this is first reading. So second reading will be in January, so there's still time for some comments. And that's the agenda.
One question. I would like to know, we have prayer in our evening meetings. Why we don't have prayer in our morning meetings? Somebody may know something. I don't know. We protect it?
Well, these death workshops, I mean, it's traditionally, it's never been as formal as the actual meeting itself. Say the pledge at the meeting.
I understand the pledge.
The answer is because we've always done it that way.
That's right. Do you want to change it? I don't, I don't.
I suggest we have prayer. I talked to a couple of preachers and they can't show up. We always got Deacon Evans over there.
That's negative.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session, present to OCGA, Section 54, 143B, for purpose of liberty, discussing evaluation of personnel as well as pending litigation. Is that correct, Mr. Wheeler?
Potential litigation.
Potential.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, let me know. My show's in.